All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular council meeting for January 6th. Councilmember Mosley notified me, he's got a severe chest cold and so he will not be here. But other than that, I'll be leading us in invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and do the people's business. I pray, Lord, that you will grant us wisdom and help us to decide for what is in the best interest of the public. I pray and ask that we continue to be tactful and respectful as always, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business we have is Ms. Alicia Gillen with the Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Alicia Gillen, Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce. It has been a fun year, so we are just here to recap 2019. So I thought I would do that with a lyrical dance. Okay, just kidding. I actually have a video presentation, cue music.
No, there's music.
I thought you were supposed to sing?
Yeah, that was it. Yeah. That's very cute though. We've got music to go with it.
It has music.
We're gonna get it.
How about I start over, if you guys can spare with me for just one moment?
Wow, is that true? That's crazy. Eighty-two? Motion to per. Per move up top.
Here we go. Very cute.
Good job.
Better than the dance, right? Well, again, I just hope that was just a small recap, so you can see how busy we've been this past year. It has been such a great honor to work for this community. We are coming into our fifth year as Executive Director of the Chamber, and so we increase those numbers every single year. So putting those on paper was really special for us, but we could not do it without support of City Council, with our residents, and with our mayor's support as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Very good job, Alicia.
As I say, so if there's anything moving forward into 2020 that you see on the horizon and see us as being an integral part of that, let me know, because we got some plans, and I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is approval of the December 16th regular meeting minutes, which you've been given a copy of, is there any suggestions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept those. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving on to public comments, I have two public comment cards on items not on the agenda. The first is Mr. Donald Bates. Mr. Bates, please come on up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Donald Bates, I live at 14 Zircon in North Point neighborhood. What I wanted to ask about was, in my street where I live, we've had in the last year, where the police have had to go in and bust doors, and I guess it was drugs. But anyway, that's pretty shocking when you step out and you see people in the street, you don't carry an M-16s and stuff, and I'm not trying to bedmouth the police at all, but how the situation got there, and I've, you know, got to asking around. We have a lot of rent houses. And I mentioned something to you over at the Odom Center, and I don't think you really wanted to hear it, but you said you could not interfere with somebody on renting, you know, whoever they want to rent to. But we have rental agencies that are renting these houses for the owners. And I certainly think we can, or the city of Mammell has some say in who, in a business operating, that they could, you know, require them to do a little more investigation on who they rent to. The people, the last, that they had to do just a few weeks ago, and it's four houses down, and we're somewhere in between, where they've had to do two major raids. And when you've got to go in with guns and it takes six or seven police officers, it's serious. Somebody can get shot. And I prefer it not be me or my neighborhood. So that's why I'm trying to say, can you not do something on these rental agencies to require them to do a background check on people, so our police don't have to risk their lives and put the neighborhood in danger? That's, that's all I want to bring up, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And the next item is Mr. Paisno. If you could come on up. State your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Jim Paisno, I live at 363 Mountain Terrace Circle. And I'm here this evening to advocate for a sign ordinance modifying. The organization I advocate for and support is the Mammell Center on the Lake, and we are called Counting on Each Other, 501(c)(3) here in Mammell. We provide financial needs for the causes we hold, for these causes, we hold fundraisers through the year. And we have two events, one's Shred It and one's called Find a Treasure. It's an indoor garage sale. And to provide financial needs for these causes, we hold fundraisers. And we use these flags and these banners that I'm asking about to spread the word in different ways. One of the ways is our printed yard signs that we put out, day of the sale, removed after the sale. And we also have, I call them feather flags, but they're actually a flag banner. They are not currently approved by the city of Mammell, and that is why I'm here tonight. Both of these fundraisers are one-day events, and that is all the time that the banners would be displayed. Each event is held twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. Mr. Carter, Trent Carter of the Code Enforcement Permits, gave me some information about their sizes and what the code refers to as banners. They cannot be no larger than 32 square feet, which is basically eight by four, and typically that's a horizontal sign. These are vertical signs, so they stand up and they wave in the air. The ones that we own are currently 12-foot by 30 inches, which is 30 square feet. And so they are under the size that it talks about in the code. I need to bring this request to the council to see if I can't get some, I call it a waiver, to use these for our special events for a limited time. It's not something that'll be up for weeks on end. And have any questions?
Thank you, sir. So your public comment form was requesting a waiver for the vertical flag banner. I believe I spoke with Mr. Carter.
Yes, you did.
And once he's, once that's denied, you can request a waiver and we'd get it as an agenda item. You can do that either by emailing me or the city clerk, or at least letting us know to have it as an agenda item. And we can, I believe that's the protocol.
Okay.
And then we can put it on there with the relevant rules and stuff for the council to get in the council packet.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to Financial Statement Review, we'll be at the second meeting. First meeting of the month, it would be Mr. Department Report from Mr. Trent Carter. Come on down, you're the next contestant.
Don't dance or sing, and I don't like most of the common music these days, but. Trent Carter, the Director of Code Enforcement, excuse me, Permits and Building Inspections. I have a presentation that I'd like to share with you, kind of mostly about everything to do with the last year, and then back to the last five years, that have everything to do with the housing here and the construction in the city. And I believe we have. We're here.
Would you like me to start?
Yes, sorry. The first slide I put together, this is a representation, a total monthly single-family evaluations of all the houses that have been built in Mammell since 2015. There's only two periods that have existed since 2015, and that's January and June of that year, where there weren't any houses at all permitted during that month. So every, every month after that, or outside of those two months, actually, we've had some construction of new family, single-family housing. That doesn't include any of the apartment construction that we've had, and I'll go over some of those here in a minute. But as you can see, there's no real trend. This reason I wanted to put this presentation together is to see, when do the houses get built the most? You know, is it August, is it June? I tried to put together a trending, and I just couldn't come up with one. As you'll see, some of these months, there may be one that was permitted. The highlight of 2017, in May, we had 15 houses, new houses, that were permitted to be constructed at a value of a little over $3.9 million. And if you look, last year, 2019, is the farthest number over. We had a pretty good jump back up from, from 2018, there's a little less. And I'm not a Realtor, I'm not a banker, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the trends are. Maybe somebody can present that to us at some point, but it seems like we're still a healthy building community. I think a lot of people still want to live here in Mammell. I think because mostly of the values that we all share with one another about having a nice, clean community and having property values that we can hope to appreciate. And of course, everybody that owns a home, that's their biggest investment, we want to protect it. At the same time, we want to have the builders build safe, reliable homes as well, energy efficient. That's another thing that we are looking for in our department, to make sure that they're complying with the codes that we have out there. This shows the new housing starts in each of the months, from 2015 to 2019. Again, January and June of 2015, there were none permitted, and those are only two periods where we didn't have some sort of activity. And while these numbers are kind of significant, I thought maybe you'd like to know that, on average, this is a total of 293 homes that were built in this five-year period. So that's an average of 59 a year, with an average value of $302,000. Quite a bit expensive in my, in my terms, I think, of housing, you know, affordable. I look for something in maybe the 225 range would be. But knowing that we build houses of that value, I think it, you know, it says something about this community. It, it really means a lot more affluent people are living here. And the money that comes from this tax base really helps us with our roads and other things that people need in the community, our police and fire as well. To put this in perspective of my department, with our inspectors, is with these 293 homes, there were over 1,900 inspections performed with all of the construction. So that's, excuse me, that's, that was in 2019. The, the overall number of inspection we did during this five-year period was a little over 10,000 inspections, just for the basic construction of the home, whether it be the electrical, the plumbing, the mechanical, anything that was there, we had to inspect to make sure that it's up to code. Everything that you can think of that would, that'd make a home energy efficient, we're checking all of these avenues as well. I did some number crunching. The census says that we have, on average, 2.27 people per resident. And I know a lot of people are anxious to see what the census is gonna come up with, and on April 1st is when it begins. So if you figure that with the number of houses, which is a little over 8,500, we should hit a population of around 19,500, maybe a little more. Those are just my numbers based on what I can see from the construction of single-family and multifamily residents. Next slide. So we're hitting the next decade, we're gonna hit the twenties, the roaring twenties is what I'm considering this. I don't know if it's gonna be the 1920s, like we had the explosion of wealth in America. But I certainly hope that it is comparable to that. So what I put up here is the, these are some of the major developments that are going on right now. The Carney Hand Village, which a lot of people have seen here, right off of Club Manor. Oshage Hills and Oshage Terrace, that's your Manitou Seminole Lane, all the houses are off of that. Mama Valley Estates, we have two phases still doing some, some construction, Phase 17 and Phase 18. Phase 18 would be that area of Tahoe and Keystone that Lynn Dickey has, has developed. Country Club of Arkansas, Phase 24 and 24B. And those are some of the more active ones right now. We anticipate the M at the White Oak Crossing, which is going under some reorganization of how it's gonna turn out. But then you have Natural Trail Estates and Ridgeview Trails. So with that, we have approximately 315 platted lots that are available right now through December 31st. And again, as I said, with an average home value of $300,000, a little over that. And 59 a year, we should hit somewhere around 295 homes in the next five years. That will take up 94% of those platted lots that we have. So we do have other land that could be developed. I don't have anything on the table just yet that I think has been brought to you for approval yet. But people say, oh, there's, there's land, we have to cut down trees. Well, that's true, but we still do have some, some available land where we would not have to cut down all the trees. The next slide, if you mind. The other part of our department that we inspect is the commercial side of, of construction. And this represents 2015 to 2019, all of the new and remodel type construction that we do inspect with the, with the commercial side of things. Some of the highlights that you notice, in 2015, there was over $16 million in, in some development and investment. And most of that is, 10 million of that was the Villas at Riverpoint. They put up six new multifamily units, high-end apartment facilities. They eventually in 2018 started another development, and that highlight there, they added two more buildings at $3.2 million each. We have the Charter School in 2015 that did a remodel of $4.7 million. Kimberly Clark, they did an addition, which about $5.6 million. The highlight of 2016 was the fire station, the number two fire station, a little over $3.9 million. And then the new Charter High School itself was a little over $15 million. So that represents a lot of what has been going on here in the last five years. With all of that comes a lot of other problems, so the Code Enforcement is the other side of our department, what we have to deal with. And if, next slide. This is what you come up with, and this is prior to Mammell really having a Code Enforcement Division that went out to the inspections and told the builders, look, you gotta, you gotta maintain these sites. Blowable debris is everywhere. That's something that we, over the years, have, have really gotten a control on. New builders that come in, they may not know our rules and requirements. We are required to provide to them a stormwater protection plan, and they are to adhere to that, so that any stormwater events, we get recorded, and we know where that stormwater runoff is going. Next slide. This is, again, some of the previous photos of Code Enforcement. Some of the things that you see on a construction site where these erosion control measures, silt fence is what that's called, it is supposed to prevent all that silt from getting into our stormwater, which is a really, really big key for Mammell, because we are right next to the river. That is our drinking water. Surface water runoff is contaminated, then they have to do a lot more measures to, to protect that water base for us and provide potable water. Next slide. This is what we would like for the construction sites to look like, a nice tailored silt fence put around the construction site. As you see in the foreground, there, it's kind of a small picture, but there's some old silt fence and some erosion that has happened on, on that landscaping site there. And again, this is an older picture, but this is what we do now to bring the builders and make them responsible for, for their construction activities, because it's really key to prevent things that we have to do, go do. And one of the things that we're challenged with in our stormwater management is we are supposed to bring to you, this council, and to our citizens. I think you missed a slide there. We're challenged to bring the, the stormwater issues to, to the environment, or, excuse me, to the community about the environment, how it could change and impact our, our water. Yeah, next slide. And some of that involves doing some education in our, in our classrooms. This is a recent photo from Mr. Darn Harbor, we just did a presentation at the Pine Forest Elementary School. And we alerted children of, of an age of fifth grade, fourth and fifth graders, and you know, about, you know, not pouring things down the drain, such as bleach and what have you, and stuff like that. People have, in the past, blown leaves into the storm drains, you know, that's a no-no, it clogs them up. It costs money to clean them as well. And then it costs a lot more money to doctor our water up, to make it drinkable and usable. And so the public outreach is something that we were challenged to put out there, and we're gonna be doing a lot more of that in 2020. We've, we've kind of fallen off the wagon a little bit in the last couple of years, but hopefully we'll, we'll get back to making everyone aware of what, you know, not just the construction going on, but the, the things that, you know, hopefully builders will, will, moving forward, not contaminate our water sources. And any questions?
Any questions or comments from Mr. Carter?
I think we ought to congratulate you on doing a great job. I, I, my experience has really been awesome.
Well, I was, thank you, I was brought through for the last four years with, with Mr. Morley, and you know, you can, you can thank him for his education of, of the staff that we have now, because we really do have two of the best building inspectors in the state, and it's been brought to our attention, not just by us, but by the builders that come from, from Little Rock and tell us, you know, we aren't required to do that over there, and we're glad that you make us, because it actually makes our houses more energy efficient, it's, they're safer. If tornadoes happened to hit Mammell, I would think that probably 90% of the newer homes would, would be standing versus the ones across the river that aren't built according to this prescribed code. I'm not saying that they're bad over there, it's just they don't do reviews of, of the plans for all residential. They do commercial, but they don't do residential plan reviews for the homes. And, and we have been since 2004, and I think it saves a lot of money in some other areas where you're talking about our insurance rates too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Good job.
One of the things I didn't fully understand when I was on the council is I always thought of Trent's job as the Director of Code Enforcement, and that's actually maybe a smaller part of how he spends his day in that building inspections, permits is, and there's time spent on Code Enforcement as well. But I didn't really realize just how small a role that played compared to the whole big picture there, so thank you. Next up is a, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion in a second, any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business, we started with a clean slate for 2020. The first order of new business is the council meeting protocol. Organizing the council is what state law says we have to do at the beginning of every year. Unlike a lot of cities, we do have a lot of our procedure laid out by ordinance, so these tend to be less spirited discussions. However, this is a good opportunity for an open floor to discuss the procedure by which the council operates. And so with that, the floor is open for any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts. Councilmember Scott?
I think just a couple of years ago, we went through this and came into compliance with some of the things that were sort of out of order. It wasn't that we were doing anything wrong, but they just weren't in the same order, and we put those things in order. And I didn't see anything else that, that we weren't in compliance with. So I thought this was just a good thing, it's just kind of like a formality almost.
It is, it is a statutory requirement, and so here we are. And I think it was at this meeting either last year or two years ago, where we discussed the organization of the council agenda, and then made some changes to the agenda or to the ordinance to match things up, right? Councilmember Card?
My only comment would be, I think I mentioned this last year, as a newbie, the Planning Commission report from the council member that's assigned to it comes at the end of the meeting, and it seems like we always deal with all of the Planning Commission stuff during the meeting, and then it's kind of redundant to actually offer the thoughts at the end of the meeting. So it might be more appropriate if we moved that to the head of the list, and I'll just throw that out there. It just seems redundant for the council member to report on what we all know that we just did. Yeah, exactly, so.
That does not appear to be something in the ordinance, so something that can certainly be handled fairly simply, if that is what the council wishes. Is there anyone who thinks it's a bad idea? No? Okay. Consider it done. The, is there anything else on, do we feel sufficiently organized? We are organized, okay. Next up is the first reading of ordinance, not. Next up is the first reading of ordinance 991. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, and ordinance number 991, an ordinance of the City Council of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the police officer sick leave accruals and for other purposes.
This is an ordinance that, one of the things we've been working on, and by we, I mean, primarily human resources and the city attorney, is updating our personnel policy, which hasn't had a significant update, I want to say since 2011. I may be wrong about that date, but it's, it's been a while. During the drafting of the new policy, some questions came up between HR and the city attorney as we sought to make sure that the new personnel handbook was accurate, which led us to ordinance, to, in fact, maybe I could let the city attorney explain, but long story short, I think we found a state law that contradicted our local ordinance. Madam City Attorney?
Sure. The code section at issue is 14-52-107, and it governs the maximum and some, that the accrual, sick leave accruals that you, that a municipal law enforcement agency can allow. And it says, "If unused, sick leave shall accumulate to a maximum of 60 days unless the city or town by ordinance authorizes the accumulation of a greater amount, in no event to exceed a maximum accumulation of 90 days." And it doesn't define what a day is in that particular code section. This portion of this statute was written in 1985. That's when it was adopted. Since then, there have been a number of different attorney general opinions that address how to decide what a working day is. Those attorney general opinions have stated that in the absence of a specific definition in the statute, a working day is eight, an eight-hour day. So it's basically eight hours of credit. In doing so, they cite to a case out of Fort Smith, I think it's the Brewer case, that was back in 1973. So, you know, this is not new law, but that's not, not atypical for Arkansas. We don't decide as many cases as some larger states do, so that's still what they look to. And as recently as 2012, the attorney general cited back to that opinion again, and it was in reference to vacation days for law enforcement officers. But they did stay consistent that in the absence of a definition, a working day is to be interpreted to be eight hours. So using that eight-hour guideline, that's where this ordinance came from, that they, it would change to the maximum accumulation of 90 days, you know, formerly 100, that we had allowed, and would change it to the eight-hour period.
Councilmember Scott by, by a hair.
By a hair. It feels like our police officers are losing something in this because the vacation time goes like from 100, or the sick leave time goes from 180 hours to 160 hours. And I know that we're trying to be in compliance, but their accumulated time goes from 1,200 hours to 720 hours. How would that affect employees who are nearer at that maximum at this point?
Well, so there is, I, I looked and have not been able to find cases or attorney general opinions that are specific to that question. But there is an attorney general opinion that states that cities have some discretion over not how hours are accrued, but how they are credited. And, and in this instance, they've already been credited. So I, you know, I think that it's ambiguous, and ultimately, it would be the call of the mayor and the human resources director to decide what we want our policy to be on that. But I, I don't know that there's a clear-cut answer in the case law or guidance.
Was that your only question, Ms. Scott? Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. In looking through this, it says here, da-da-da, a maximum of 90, 80 hour, or eight-hour working days. What happens if they exceed 90 hours? I didn't see anything in here about that. Do they get paid for the sick time, or do they just lose it, or?
Okay, I'm sorry. So if it, you're saying if they accrue, like if they are accruing at the normal rate per year, which is 20 hours, or 20 days per year, and then they get past the maximum accrual amount, or?
When they hit 90, it says that's a maximum. What happens when they accrue some more time? They can't record it, they can't state it.
Right. No, and there's been some discussion of possibly implementing a catastrophic leave bank, where they might be able to donate it, but they would not, we would not be able to continue accruing it on, in, for their own individual accounts.
If that were to occur, is that something that would need to be in this ordinance?
The catastrophic leave bank? I don't think it would need to be in this ordinance. I think it would need to be in an ordinance, but I think it would need to be in a separate ordinance. And there are some guidelines in the statute that discuss how that can be adopted.
Well, I'm just trying to be sensitive to, to their feelings. I know that if I were a policeman, and I hit that, that 90 hour, or that 90-day point, and then, and I hit that because I'm being good and coming to work, you know? I'm not just calling in sick. So I've been good, and I'm, that's why I ask, what happens after that 90-day accrual? Because it's almost like punishing me for being good if we don't have some policy for them.
You don't accrue anymore? I'm sorry. Yeah.
It just doesn't accrue, it's, it's, it would probably be much like a vacation time where we have a, a certain amount that can carry over from year, year to year. Anything that isn't used over the cap, it's, it's, and having it be, the beginning of January, we had a lot of people in December that took their use it or lose it vacation leave. We don't treat sick leave the same way. You don't just get to call in sick a whole lot.
And I think that's pretty typical in the private sector, at least. I mean, in all my previous employment, you cap out into how much sick leave you can accrue. I've lost 60 days on two different occasions. I mean, that's the maximum that you accrue, and when you get it, and when you get there, you don't get any more unless you use it.
I never, I was self-employed most of my life, so, you know.
You had a lot of sick days?
All I wanted. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Vapurzine?
Could I ask Chief Pickard a question or two? Is that okay?
Certainly. Chief?
I know you've got a large, or a number of fellows here today, and everybody's a little concerned, and I want to know what your thoughts are on this and how you view, you know, this potentially, so.
Well, as the council member has already spoken, I think it's a hit to the officer's morale. When it comes to the workday definition, the eight hours, none of, 55% of the department or 21 officers work a 12-hour shift, which is what their workday is. It is not eight hours. It is also written into the city ordinance that is currently in place, that it accrues at the 12-hour working day. So to me, that's the statutory language that has defined what our working day is and how it shall accrue. Also, the Department of Labor, in, according to the Fair Labor Standards Act, as early, or as recent as 2008, defined a workday in general means the period between the time on any particular day when such employee commences his or her principal activity and the time on that day at which he or she ceases such principal activity or activities. So to me, that says that when our officers come on duty, when they leave, which would be the 12-hour, which affects most of the department, and I think that's how it should be accrued. Now, as far as the state law is considered, or is in compliance, to bring us into compliance, I agree with that. I mean, there's no reason that a police department shouldn't be in compliance with state law. So I would agree at the 15, instead of 20, the way that this ordinance is written, instead of 15, or 28-hour working days, leave it at the 15 and 12-hour working days. And then the top out is 90. I mean, that's what the maximum is accrued. That's, that would be my, what I think would be a fair number. And then again, it's up to the mayor as far as the overage, what they do with that.
I just, I just know that everybody's a little bit concerned because some guys are topped out, and they don't want to lose, you know, they haven't taken days off, you know, some of the guys have taken days off for a long, 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 long time. They come to work when they're sick.
Right.
And so I don't, I don't, I didn't want to take away something from them that, that has been earned, so to speak.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Chief Pickard to repeat what you said about what you are okay with? I didn't quite understand that.
Getting us into compliance with the state law, which is the 90-day cap. The only point of contention that I have seems to be the definition of the working day. And I think it should be stay at the 12 hours that was written into the original ordinance versus this eight-hour catch-all. That does apply to majority of professions. However, we, the majority of our department works more than eight hours. So I, I don't think that that's an arbitrary number that can be just thrown out there when it applies to the police department.
Thank you. Did you have anything additional, Councilmember Vapurzine? Thank you, sir. Thank you, chief. Councilmember Williams?
I think that the reason, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason you would like for it to stay at 12 is because it wouldn't just affect six days, right? It could potentially affect vacation days and, and anything else. I mean, if we keep it at 12...
Correct. It's a slippery slope.
Right. It is a slippery slope, and we just, we go from there. I have a, there's 24 out of 38 officers who are already over the 720, who are in, you know...
Correct. They're roughly at the 1,200 max currently. I think it would be an easier pill to swallow to lose 120 hours or to deal with that versus 480 hours per officer.
Right. Right. I see where you're saying, what you're saying. But we're only talking about, and just teach me this, we're only talking about sick leave on officers, not, this is, this has nothing to do with retirement, right? So they've accrued, I mean, if you've accrued 720 or 1,200 when you retire...
We don't pay out, we pay out, for those who retire, we pay out 480 hours.
Right. So it doesn't matter how much you've accrued over the time, this doesn't have to be...
Up to 480.
And so this is, doesn't even pertain to that?
To retirement, correct.
Okay. Okay.
So the ceiling for what you can carry overs already exceeds the, what we would pay out.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just kind of going through my notes here. Some of these have been answered. Regarding with what Chief Pickard just said, about 24 of the 38 officers basically being capped now, can we get a report, something showing officers that have more than 720 accrued hours? Is it...
I, I, I think we can get you a report.
And I wouldn't want names, but just, yeah, no, just a number of what we're, how many we're talking about, because those are the ones that are impacted, right? Those that have more...
Arguably not.
Sure.
Those are the folks that have accumulated, that are not known for using up all their sick time, right? So that's why they've accumulated so much.
Right. Right. Okay, so if we could get, you know, just know what that number is of who is above 720, because that's the ones that we could possibly be dealing with in some, in some manner. The other piece is something that Councilmember Scott mentioned. Since these officers have accredited these sick hours already, one of the things attorney, city attorney Krebs mentioned to me earlier today was that the, the language talks about how they accrue hours, but not how they've been credited. So since they've already been credited and are maybe capped at that 1,200, can we grandfather them in of sorts and make a policy? Either it come from the mayor, or if it would have more longevity, maybe a resolution from the council, I don't know if that would impact it, grandfathering those police officers that have over 720, and at least letting them keep what they have. But the understanding, of course, is they then wouldn't accrue any more hours until they use up some of their time and back themselves down to the 720, where they could start...
Or below.
Or, yeah, well, they'd have to go below before they could start accruing anymore. So that's kind of my next question. Could we do something like that? Would that be legal for us to grandfather them in and?
I mean, as far as whether it's legal, you know, we could do an inquiry to the AG's office and see what they say. I mean, I, I don't know that there's anything, we're not going to find that answer like in black and white, saying, "Yes, you can do that."
We'd have to make our own case law.
We don't want to make our own case law.
Okay, all right. Good, good point.
We want to seek advice.
Okay, so the retirement issue been, has been answered. We only pay up to 480 hours, so that doesn't affect this at all. The city has a, a long-term disability policy in force on its employees, do they not? That'd be a question for our HR director.
Long-term disability?
Short-term.
So this, does the city, we don't...
The question, could you rephrase that again?
Yeah, sure. For the director. Does the city provide and pay for a long-term disability or a short-term disability policy on behalf of the employees? Uniformed officers, I guess I would say, in this case.
Not and, but yes. We do pay for a long-term disability policy on every employee that we have.
Every employee? Okay. So it's, is the, do you know what the waiting period is for?
The elimination period for long-term disability is 180 days.
180 days.
Six months.
Okay. And so typically, disability policies accrue by calendar days, not working days. So I'm assuming that the definition...
Correct.
Here is, okay.
Yes.
Reason I'm asking that is that, you know, I know a lot of our officers, we use this sick leave as a sick bank, essentially, and you wouldn't need to purchase a short-term disability policy because you may have an extended sick bank built up. And I'm wondering what that limit was, but it sounds like it's a six-month disability policy.
Six months, correct.
Okay.
And that would be, like you said, calendar days.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. And the last one, what happens if this ordinance fails and we don't pass it?
Well, so potentially, and I'm, I don't know whether any of this would happen, but obviously this is in public, and subject to public attention now. I mean, I can foresee that there could be a lawsuit that would, you know, we would get a court order saying, "Mammell, obey state law."
Right.
Or maybe some type of illegal exaction where we're, we're using public funds, which we have a, you know, or a public trust to use for the public good in a manner that violates state law. So that's what I would like to avoid.
Right. Well, that, that's been my dilemma today, is it appears that what our, the benefit that we're offering is greater than what state law allows and what the attorney general and the state supreme court have said. And it's difficult to take that...
Right.
Take that back. We've been generous. And anyway, I just, I kind of knew the answer to that, but you don't want to violate state law. So...
Especially once you're aware of the law.
Right.
The ignorance of the law is never an excuse, but once you become aware, and as we're doing, and Jared's been very thorough, and the city attorney's worked with him on just, on all aspects of the, the personnel policy. When I saw it, I was like, "Oh, great. Now I've got something that, that the, the policy says one thing in what very clearly looks like the law is saying that we shouldn't be doing, and it's for police officers, public safety," which is the exact, I mean, I, I was like, I couldn't have think, I couldn't have thought of a worse group of people for it to negatively impact. But at the end of the day, it was also a fairly straightforward issue.
I guess my only takeaway from this, it, it appears the law is what the law is, but if we could find a way to grandfather in and credit the officers for what they have already accrued and have been credited, that would be a nice way to at least try to make this as whole as we could.
It seems working.
Yeah.
That'll count. Thank you. I have Councilmember Williams next.
So talking about the, the whole grandfathering thing, I guess, see, that's been marked out here on this ordinance, and I guess back in the day when this ordinance was passed, retroactivity was, was the topic there, and this section shall be considered retroactively applied, and it gives a date. So could we possibly do this again and, and put the, a new date on it where we can retroactively let this apply to those who have already been credited, is what I'm saying.
It sounds like what folks are suggesting is that it not be retroactive.
Not be, okay.
So that, well, I guess I'm grandfathered in and retroactive seem to me to be the same. to me to be the same, same term. So are we saying the same thing, but I've got the, basically?
Yeah.
So I would like for those who have it to keep it, and that to be in the ordinance with a date, I believe.
And was that dependent on the AG's opinion, or was that just something that we could do ourselves?
I think that's something that we could do, as far as them being allowed to keep what they, they've earned.
Well, that's-
Right.
Somewhat questionable. Okay, so there's one AG opinion that just discusses time being credited, and so, but it's in the context of a person who's out on leave, and they're accruing sick leave or vacation, sick and vacation, I believe. And so that city determined not to credit them with that leave until they return from leave, and the AG was considering it in that context. So when I say there's, I mean, there's an AG opinion on crediting leave, that's true, but I mean, it's not so closely analogous to the situation that I would want to do it without probably trying to get their opinion on whether we could. Which opens up kind of a can of worms, because then we're saying, hey, we've been doing this illegally for fourteen years. Can we do this, can we, can we, can we do something else that's above and beyond? But I mean, I'm willing to do that if that's what you guys want to do.
I just want to come up with a solution that's as painless as possible for our officers. We owe them that.
I received a text message from Mr. Johnny on-the-spot Jared Azon, who said there are twenty-two officers that have a balance above seven-hundred-and-eighty, fifteen of which are at the maximum twelve-hundred. So there was a question earlier about that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
I'm, I'm thinking back, I think we've had a couple of instances in the past where officers have been hurt in the line of duty, and their sick leave ran out, and it came before the council to extend that. And I think in both cases, the council extended that beyond what was in the rules, and we would still be able to do that, would we not?
Workers' comp. So there are, there have been issues in the past that it has, that the city has picked up the difference between workers' comp and the full salary, in the relatively recent past. Also, technically, the Personnel Manual, technically, we have a leave bank already, catastrophic leave bank, which, that concept, for those that are unaware, that says that those who don't use sick time can donate that sick time to a bank where it sits, and then a committee or a group of people serve to pass out that time. Though as far as I know, that hasn't been in place in, I mean, it's, it's been on paper, but hasn't functioned. And Tina, you've been a, how long ago was that?
The last time we used it?
That you can think of, yes.
I, I know exactly, I think I may have been the last person. It's been a-
That was not a setup?
About five years.
Five years?
That I'm aware of.
So we didn't use the catastrophic leave bank when the officer was hurt on the bridge in the car accident?
No.
And we didn't lose it, use it when Officer Rusi had his thumb cut off?
I do not know, but I think coincidental timing, when he was, if you have an emergency call, if you don't mind, Officer Rusi, really quickly, Councilmember Scott had asked whether or not, when you were injured, if the city picked up that additional-
Yeah, at that time, it was changed, Chief Williams at that time, it was, is it sixty percent, we would only get for workman's comp? But they changed it, the city council, and I got a hundred percent. So I was covered, but that was under workman's compensation.
Okay, so it wasn't the sick leave.
It wasn't sick leave at that all.
How's your thumb?
Great.
Thank you, sir. Which is, as I understand, it's workers' comp will cover two-thirds, which is, which is, as I understand, what we did with Officer Cruz, that was injured, and I believe we've used that a few other times for shorter durations, not necessarily just in the police department, but those that are injured in the line of duty, so to speak.
Thank you. And I don't think we've had first reading on this ordinance yet.
All right.
Did you?
It was a long time ago.
I remember asking for it, I didn't listen, though. So this is on first reading? There's been posed a lot of good questions. It's an ordinance that I, that, once it was presented as, as a change to fit the law, I didn't put much thought into it after that, and have talked with a few different folks that had questions about it. But it's something we'd rather get done right than quickly, so while it'll be on second reading, there's, it's not something that needs to be rushed through, and so it's not something that, if something comes up at a second or third reading, that we determine would make things more equitable while still complying with the law, that we couldn't make those changes then. Councilmember Tierney?
You had mentioned earlier about how in the past, they'd created a bank for hours for people when they had a need for them. Would there be any possibility of creating a bank now with the hours that already exist, so they wouldn't be lost, but just put in a bank, you know, for future storage for when such a occurrence did arise?
Yeah, so maybe. Well, so the goal is to get the Personnel Handbook updated, and start following some of those things, and properly reporting what it is that we do. State law, the city's had one before, multiple cities had some, this last legislative session in 2019, the legislature passed a statute authorizing cities to do what the municipal league has long advocated they already had the power to do. But it presented terms and conditions in the state, and it was, it was designed to address a, a law, it was, it was designed to address the concerns of the firefighters, the statewide firefighters associations. And my goal was just to use whatever that state law now explicitly authorizes as our And so I don't have a definite answer for you. That might be a good idea, but we'd want to make sure that there was no issue with that.
They wouldn't lose the hours, they would still be there whenever there was a need.
So the bank, the bank is like a communal bank.
Right.
Right? It's not just like you take leave off of your account and store it in your personal bank account, it's a communal thing. It would mean that the hours weren't overall lost.
Correct.
Of which it looks like fifteen of the twenty-two officers that currently exceed the seven-eighty have been losing hours above their cap.
Isn't it seven-twenty?
What did I say?
It's twelve-hundred currently.
Yeah, but he was saying seven-eighty, and it goes to seven-twenty.
Right, he's talking about the fifteen.
Okay, yeah, I misspoke. But it's something we could certainly look into.
Okay.
Council, Madam City Clerk?
I want to clarify, I actually have never used a catastrophic bank, but I was in a situation where my time had exceeded the time allowed to carry over. However, I experienced a situation where I needed to be off for an extended period of time, and because I was allowed to have those hours, I could use them. So I just wanted to give you guys that, as you're deliberating, it can, it could prevent the need for the catastrophic bank if they're allowed to keep the hours that they accrue, if it's legal.
Yeah.
It comes down to that.
That pesky law.
All right, any further discussion for today? If not, it will be on second reading at the next council meeting. I'm going to do something I don't know that I've done all last year, what's that? What's the first reading? And so I don't have any mayor's comments, other than Happy New Year.
Wow.
So with that, are there any city council member comments? Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate Councilmember Vapurzyn for becoming a senior at the Senior Center.
Thank you.
Don't get too excited, Councilmember.
Welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Saunders wanted to welcome him. What, could you say that again for Councilmember Hold, I don't think heard you? Can we say it one more time, please?
I was congratulating Councilmember Vapurzyn for joining the Senior Center.
Oh.
I'm a big supporter on the Senior Center. I think everybody should be in it.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second.
That's right. I haven't been a stud in a long time, but all of a sudden, I feel young again.
At the Center on the Lake?
No, it's, it's beautiful over there. It's a great place.
Are there any additional council member comments?
I would join, but when they say I'm grandfathered in, I'm really grandfathered in.
I am too. I'm great-grandfathered in.
Madam City Attorney, have you any comments?
No other comments.
Madam City Clerk?
No, sir.
Offered.
Motion to adjourn that has been offered and seconded. We are adjourned.
We didn't vote.
All in favor?
Yes.